All right. Looks like we've got everybody. And my PC wants to keep restarting. All right, we will call the meeting to order at 9:05. And there you are, Robert Donavick. Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Madam President.
All right, if we can all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Donavick. Good evening and welcome to the April 26, 2021 study session of Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,920th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, May 10, 2021. We have all members of the council with us this evening, except for Councilmember Jolly. I have no announcements to make. Does anyone in council have any announcements to make? If the clerk is not back yet, I will make one on behalf of the clerk for anyone who was not with us in the first meeting. A reminder that our Livonia School Bond Renewal Election is this coming Tuesday, May 4. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots are in the mail. They may be requested at the city clerk's office until Monday at 5:00, Susan, is that correct?
Four.
Four o'clock on Monday. On Monday at four o'clock.
And we will be open on Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00.
All right, thank you for that. I missed that. This is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken at this meeting. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each of them. Offer may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and placed on file for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular, to the agenda for the regular meeting of Monday, May 10, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate, any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the Raise Your Hand button on Zoom or press *9 on your phone when that item is called, and you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by those, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called upon, please state your name and address for the record, so that the remarks may be properly attributed to you in a minute. It will also let the council members and those joining us via Zoom and at home know who is speaking to them. And just a reminder that to unmute yourself, joining us on the phone, you use *6. And we will begin with Stephanie Blatt Reel, and I will ask for a correction on that name, to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on May 16, 2024. Do we have someone from? Let's see, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Hi, I'm sorry, I couldn't find the raise hand fast enough.
No problem.
Okay. Good evening, council. I am happy to present Stephanie Blatt for reappointment to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. Stephanie Blatt is the Community Affairs Manager for Consumers Energy, Michigan's largest energy provider. She proudly serves Wayne, Washtenaw, and Monroe Counties, working with key stakeholders, local governments, and customers to build relationships and foster partnerships between the company and communities in southeast Michigan. An active community member, Stephanie sits on the boards of both the Monroe County Business Development Corporation and also the Livonia Chamber of Commerce. Stephanie holds a bachelor's degree in political science from Syracuse University's Maxwell School, as well as a certificate of completion from the American University, Washington, D.C., Semester Program in American Politics. I believe that Stephanie is on the call and would like to make a few remarks.
Very nice, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Let's see, I'm looking for Stephanie. Let's see. Stephanie, if you were there, if you could please, if you're on the phone, if you could please press *9, or if you're on Zoom, if you could use the Raise Your Hand function. Well, let's see.
I'm sorry, Council President McIntyre. She says she was trying to raise her hand, but I don't.
All right. Well, I don't see her, so I'm sorry we're not able to hear from her. But you certainly did a very nice and thorough job in her presentation, so do you have any questions? Councilmember White.
I have no questions. I will offer approving and consent if there's no objection.
All right. I see no objections, we'll place that on consent. And Ms. Thomas, if, and is it, it says Blatt, is it real? I'm not sure which name is preferred, Blatt or Reel, and I may be pronouncing, you know, pronouncing it incorrectly. But if you would, if you would tell Ms. Blatt that we would be delighted if she would like to join us at the regular, she doesn't have to, it's on the consent. But we could pull it off the consent if she wants to address council.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
Very much. Item number two is a request to approve governmental agreement between the Charter County of Wayne and the City of Livonia. This comes to us from the Department of Recreation for improvements at Bicentennial Park and Clement Circle Pool with the city, with the city's participation of $100,000. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Council President McIntyre, Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We're asking council to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County for a total grant amount of $149,579. We're going to be focusing these funds on two projects. Bicentennial Park, we will, we would like to do an installation of a universally accessible playground, similar to the structure we installed at Rotary Park several years ago. And Clement Circle, the replacement of pool furniture. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this. This is a 2021 grant. These funds and these projects would take place during the 2122 fiscal year.
Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, Mr. Davis, if that's all right.
Please.
Mr. Davis, I hope all is well. In regards to the pool furniture, I was looking through the packet, is that just like chairs and tables for the pool and then huntings and whatnot?
Yeah, Commissioner Donavick, or sorry, Councilmember Donavick it is. We're a little limited with some of our funds in the districts that appropriate them and where we can spend them. I believe for the Clement Circle District, our total grant allotment is around $6,000. So that does limit what we can do. And that being such a popular amenity in that section, in that district, we tend to like, we tend to focus our money at Clement Circle. And in pool furniture, if you've been out there, there's never enough. And probably that way at just about any pool, but especially it seems Clement Circle. So that's our reasoning behind that.
Okay, and the city will be matching, I know it's in some $456,000, but we'll be matching about $100,000, is that correct?
That's the plan right now. Typically, in a fiscal year, we spend about, we try to replace one to two playgrounds a year. So the city, from the general fund, commits, in a normal year, $125,000 to $200,000 to playground replacements. So this is in line with the normal fiscal year general fund allotment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis, for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam President. Ted, look through this packet. I've not read it word for word, but in scanning through, it's not clear to me. What portion of this $456,000 is going towards the bicentennial equipment? And what portion is Clement Circle, what's the split?
It will be about $450,000 for bicentennial.
Okay. Oh, you did just say six, yeah.
That's okay, that was about our total project cost for Rotary. And we would think a similar size playscape and then accessibility features would be appropriate at bicentennial park.
And is this at McNamara Park? Or which, which playscape at bicentennial are we talking?
This would be Ben Selene.
Which is, is that the one on the west edge of the park?
East edge, the southernmost east, eastern edge, so right off of Seven Mile, the parking lot right there.
I thought that was called McNamara Park, I must just have my names wrong. Okay. All right. Oh, hey, one more question, do you know how old the playscape is that's there currently?
Different features or different ages. That actually has some of the oldest pieces still. If you, if you've been there recently, that still has the old-style merry-go-round, which they don't even make parts for anymore. You literally have to wait for someone else's merry-go-round to kind of implode and then piece it together from those parts. Most of that structure is about 21, 22 years old, most of the pieces there.
So are you just replacing the large structure? Are you replacing, I am very familiar with that park. Are you replacing all the equipment in that park or just the large structure?
We haven't decided on a site plan yet. I think we'd probably go in and evaluate each individual piece. I mean, I take my son there frequently, my youngest, he likes, you know, he calls bicentennial the fire truck park because of the fire truck with the bell, and he really likes that. He also likes the merry-go-round, even though it gives me heart palpitations as a, as a parent and a Parks and Recreation person. So, I mean, I think we'd go in and look and evaluate each individual piece. We don't have a site plan yet. And I think that's something we would have prior to asking, you know, council for an award on this.
Okay. And Ted, do you guys have, I've probably asked you this before, but when you talk about replacing one to two play structures a year, do you have a packing order all laid out, you know, of all the play structures in the city or?
We do.
Okay.
Yep, we do. And I mean, it goes by, obviously, usage, condition, age of the equipment. We try to factor in as much information and data as we possibly can to make the best possible decisions. And a lot of our usage, you know this, is anecdotal, is what we see.
Right.
When we're out there on sites, in different playgrounds and parks. This one is a very well-used amenity. And the minute we installed Rotary, the kind of calls for, why isn't this being done at bicentennial were immediate. So, I mean, it's taken us a few years, and I think this, this project makes a lot of sense.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember McCullough.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
We do not.
I'll just point out that I'm super excited about all things playgrounds. I hope you get, when, to, when the design process comes, that you get one of those spinning globe things. I forget what they're called, but those are fun. But I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent, there are no objections.
Councilmember Donavick.
Madam President, are we going to see Councilman McCullough with one of those spinny globe things in his backyard?
Yes, absolutely. I have no problem to be there.
Just a few comments. Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. I know that that playground equipment has been there for a long time, because David Cullerton, our oldest son, who's now 23, I remember when he was a little, little guy, and we were very excited, because all of a sudden, there were all these new playground features at that park and bicentennial. So it's been there a long time. I have been on one of the spinny globes. Somewhere, there's a photo and video record of it that one of my sons has, and it's to go to the grave with me. So, but I think this is, I think this is great and exciting. Accessibility in the parks is wonderful. Anybody who's over at Rotary sees how much that park is used by children of every different ability. And I think this is, this is exciting and great, so thank you, thanks, council. All right, item number three is an award of bid. This too comes source from the Department of Parks and Recreation for the department branding project as identified in Livonia Vision 21 from budgeted funds. Just one moment, before I do this, I knew there was something else I had to do. We skipped over audience communication, my apologies, it was not deliberate. It was a function of, you know, starting these meetings after nine. I'm going to go back. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with council on any item not in this evening's study meeting agenda, now is your opportunity, so, and I'm sorry that I went over, that I did not do this at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm going to call once, I'm going to call twice, I'm going to call again for audience communication. And seeing none, we will continue with the agenda where we were. And I will reread this, a word of bid. Department of Parks and Recreation for the department branding project that's identified in Livonia Vision 21 from budgeted funds. Mr. Davis, this is a big night for you.
This is, thank you, Council President. Hopefully, this is the last time I'm speaking tonight. With any luck, it is. The Department of Parks and Recreation is taking proposals for department rebranding in cooperation with community resources. We received 10 responses and narrowed that field down to two firms for interviews. After interviews, we are recommending the award go to Everwild, whose information, whose proposal is in your packet. The current logo brand dates back to the early 2000s. It lacks meaning, representation of the department, and clear identification as Livonia Parks and Recreation. Simply put, we can do better, we feel it's time for a change. The branding project is identified and council approved Livonia Vision 21 as part of the healthy communities, namely Objective 4.4, establish a marketing and branding campaign to increase awareness about Livonia's strong quality of life. The proposed project includes several phases and project deliverables. The initial phase is a discovery phase, where Everwild will be learning about Livonia Parks and Recreation, where we currently are, our vision for the future, and meetings with stakeholders. We'll then go through a development of brand platform. And what they're asking here is what makes us unique and why should people take notice? This is our, they're going to be telling our story and telling it in a compelling way. Includes a brand mission and vision, brand values, brand promise and implied benefits, and a brand positioning statement, really what we would call our tagline. So right now, our current tagline has come out in play, that was stolen from M. Parks. And before that, it was Creating Community Through People, Parks, and Programs, which was stolen from California Parks and Recreation in a project that was initially done in the late 90s. So some of these have been around for quite some time. They also will establish a brand identity, which is the visual representation of who we are at our core, our logo, color palette, and examples of use. And then finally, a style guide that allows standards for use to ensure consistency and application. Again, we are recommending the award of bid go to Everwild, their approach, experience with Parks and Recreation agencies, and projects such as the 2024 Los Angeles Olympics set them apart. Happy to answer any questions council might have on this, President.
Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, Ted. So, obviously, this involves logo, color palette, you know, the definition of mission, all the things you talked about. Do you envision this being some sort of, I mean, obviously, the logo will brand magazines and when you're within facilities, but are you envisioning some kind of wayfinding or signage or something that goes along with this? Or is this only focused on just the logo and the mission statement and those kind of things?
So, Councilman Barr, that's a great question. I mean, this, this award is only focused on the logo and the development of that, right? And how we get to that, and our mission, our vision, our brand values. I mean, that's, that's what this project is all about right now.
And does, how do you envision what ultimately comes out of this, working with the city branding? Is this going to be something completely distinct? Or is there a desire to have those two intertwined somehow?
I mean, I think they'll, they will co-mingle, they'll coexist. But, I mean, Parks and Recreation is one of the biggest, you know, outward-facing departments. And this is, you know, important for us. I mean, we do have an existing logo right now. Again, it kind of lacks, if you just saw the logo, you would not look at it and say, oh, yeah, that's Parks and Recreation. You would look at it and say, it's someone's Nike shoe upside down.
Is that the logo I'm seeing on your, on your image right now?
It is, it is. So, I mean, again, I mean, that is, you know, I mean, that's not identifiable for us, really. That doesn't represent who Parks and Recreation is, or what we are, or what we provide. And I think that's really what, what you want to get to with this process.
I agree, and I, I like what you're doing. I, by the way, and I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection. But I, one of the things I'm excited about with this, if I'm not mistaken, I'm going off memory here, this price tag is quite a bit less than what we spent for the City of Livonia branding effort a few years ago. And I'll just say that I've been, I was underwhelmed by the results of that. And so if, if Parks and Rec can, you know, can do this right, and at a lower price tag, it appears, if my memory serves me correctly, I guess I'm, I'm hopeful that that could help maybe influence what we do on the city level as well. I, please respond to this if you have a thought to it, but I, it seems to make sense to me that there'd be consistency from the city and Parks and Rec. Like, I'm all about the branding that you're talking about, but it, it doesn't make a ton of sense to me that you'd have a distinct brand for Parks and Rec versus the City of Livonia. So I'm offering approval for consent, I'm excited to see what you guys come up with, but these are just some of my thoughts, thanks.
Councilmember Donavick. I think Councilmember Donavick is frozen.
Frozen.
Either that or he just fell asleep at 5:30 in the morning, whatever it is.
We're going to give Councilmember Donavick a moment here to regroup and reload. I will note that Councilmember Toy has, I believe is still with us by phone. She has a problem in her house, suspected gas leak, and she's in her car. So I guess we should have had Stephanie Blatt from Consumers Energy on with us to, to help explain the situation. I'm just kidding, but that's why Councilmember Toy is not still with us. All right, let's see if we have. It now appears that we've lost Councilmember Donavick. So if we're not able to get him back, I would, I would suggest that we don't put this on the consent, that we put it on the regular, and then we give him an opportunity to weigh in, if that's, if everyone's agreeable to that. All right, so we'll place this on the regular agenda. And if no one else has any questions, we will forge forward. And I will note, I think if Councilmember Toy is still with us on the phone, then we're at 5:00. And even if she's, I assume she's on the phone, we, even if she's not with us over the corral, wanted to make sure everyone knew that we were still good and in compliance with corral requirements. All right, item number four is request for authorization to purchase one case 580 SN backhoe to, I don't know if that's two-wheel drive, I don't know what 2WD stands for, tractors, through the Sourcewell contract, formerly NGPA. This comes to us from the Public Service Division, be used by the Roads Department from budgeted funds. Good evening, Mr. Moore. Oh, let's see. There we go. Doug, you should be able to, there we go.
Oh, good, I was wondering what I was doing wrong. Good evening, council, this is Doug Moore with the Public Works, Department of Public Works. First item before you tonight for us is the purchase of a backhoe. It was approved in the 2021 departmental capital budget. The 2WD is two-wheel drive, so you were right. This is to be assigned to the roads maintenance section, but it will be available for all sections of DPW to use it. It's being purchased through Sourcewell, which is formerly the NGPA contract. Southeastern equipment out of Novi will be the servicing dealer. An older backhoe, whose repair costs are exceeding their value, will be disposed of through the auction process. And the purchase cost is $97,882.06. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
All right, Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent. These are cooperative purchasing agreement from budgeted funds. Everything seems in line, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on, I'll just add a little historical fact. I almost went to work for CaseTractor, and just think, if I would have, I wouldn't be here tonight, but I would be somehow still tied into Livonia City Council. So, anyway, I thought you'd all appreciate that little factoid. Moving right along, item number five is a request for authorization to purchase 10 Ford F-10 Ford 2021 F-250 pickup trucks through the State of Michigan, Macomb County, bid process. This too comes source from the Public Works Division for use by the Parks, Roads, and Building Maintenance sections. Mr. Moore.
Good evening, council, again. The department is trying something a little bit different this time. Normally, we send these up by section. This year, we're sending them up by the fund. These are all being purchased out of the capital fund, the general fund. Seven of the trucks are in the 2021 approved capital budget. Three of the trucks are, were in the 2020 capital budget and are being carried forward. Due to the coronavirus, the funding of those trucks was brought forward. We weren't able to get them in time last year. Three of the trucks will be used in the road maintenance section. Six trucks will be used in parks maintenance, and one truck will be used in building maintenance. The trucks are being purchased through the state bid process from Signature Ford of Owasso in the amount of $289,370 for the 10 trucks. The outfitting of the truck will consist of plows, light packages, spray-in bed liners. A couple of the trucks are getting lift gates, tailgates, and onboard air compressors. The cost for these will be $204,324.83 for the 10 trucks. The vehicles that are being replaced will be auctioned or disposed of through the auction process. The ages of those trucks range from 10 to 12 years old. And due to plowing snow, it's really tough on the trucks, so they're aging. The department is asking council to approve the purchase of the 10 trucks from the two mentioned vendors in the amount of $493,694.83. And I'm available for questions.
Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, everything seems in order. I do have one question, if I may, through the chair to Mr. Moore.
Please.
Will these vehicles, you know, I know, obviously, we've got the new DPW facility starting to look pretty awesome. Would these be under roof?
Pickups will not. They'll be assigned, depending on where, some of them might be assigned at Civic Center, could be at bicentennial or Greenmead. But the pickup trucks will not be under roof. It's the dump trucks, the vectors, the bigger trucks that'll be parked in the two barns.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Donavick.
Thank you, Madam President, through the chair to Mr. Moore. What happens to the vehicles that are no longer going to be of use, since we're going to be using a number of trucks?
They will be sent to auction. Normally, lately, they're being sent to the auction company that's on Telegraph Road between Schoolcraft or I-96 and Five Mile there on the east side, the name eludes me.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
All right. Else? All right, we'll place that on consent. And moving right along.
Thank you, council, have a good night, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Doug. Request approve a three-year contract extension with HydroCorp Services for the Cross Connection Control Program. This comes to us from the Public Works Division to perform all work necessarily, necessary to complete the program requirements in an amount not to exceed $66,276 annually from budgeted funds. Counsel?
Or is, was there someone from the administration that was going to speak to this or not?
Oh, good point. Uh, sorry, there's Mr. Rushlow. Sorry. I skipped ahead a little bit. Sorry about that, Jacob.
Oh, that's okay. No problem at all. Good evening, Council. Jacob Rushlow, uh, with Department of Public Works. Yes, this um, this item before you is for uh, the Water System Cross Connection Control Program, which is necessary to reduce the risk of contamination to the public water supply, which could occur if questionable water leaves a private facility's plumbing and enters the public water supply system through backflow. So this program uh, applies to private facilities, including industrial and commercial process facilities that use water, um, like pools and irrigation systems, and include uh, periodic onsite inspections and testing at over three thousand three hundred water accounts across the city. Hydrocorp has managed the city's Cross Connection Control Program since two thousand and ten. They have very extensive knowledge of our system. They have gained an excellent reputation with these private facilities that require inspections uh, ongoing and testing in those buildings. Uh, for those reasons, we recommend that City Council proceed to approve a three-year contract extension with Hydrocorp, excuse me, Hydrocorp Services through April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, and authorize an expenditure from budgeted funds in the amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars annually. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel. Uh, Councilmember White.
This is a very well-respected company. They do good work for the, the city of Livonia. It's a crucial part of our infrastructure, and I'm happy to offer an approving resolution on consent.
All right, we'll place that on consent. There are no objections. Thank you. Um, next item is a waiver petition. This comes to us from a petition regarding petition twenty twenty-one dash zero one dash zero two dash zero one submitted by Stein Investment Company, LLC requesting approval to develop and operate a climate-controlled indoor self-storage facility. I'm probably located on the north side of Plymouth Road between Sears Drive and Merriman Road, three one one zero zero Plymouth Road in the southwest quarter of Section twenty-six. Mister, I don't know if Mister Taramina is going to address this, or we've got our petitioner. Mister Gaber. Mister Gaber?
Yes, good evening, City Council, John Gaber. I believe that Mister Taramina was going to address this first to give you a, uh, an overview.
Yeah, that's, that's usually what happens, and I don't see him. Let's see. Oh, there's, um, let's see if we can summons up Mark. It's very unusual, because usually Mark is always with us and ready to go.
We can see his box on the screen, but.
Yeah, we just uh, we just can't.
Madam President, I just called up to his office. His Zoom crashed. He's trying to get back on.
Okay.
Called up there. He's trying. Looks like he's off completely now.
Madam President, is, do you think we can maybe proceed with the petitioner anyway?
Yeah, Mister Gaber, maybe you could give us an overview. We're waiting for Mister Taramina.
Sure, thank you. Uh, good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. My name is John Gaber. I'm the attorney for uh, for the applicant. Uh, my address is three eighty North Old Woodward, Suite three hundred, Birmingham, four eight zero zero nine. And with me, I have uh, some members from our, our team as well. Uh, Daniel Ginberg and, and Jason Lynn Scott are here from Stein Investment Company. Um, and I'm going to hand the floor over to uh, to Jason too, after a few comments. Um, because he can give you more on the, you know, the actual plans and the operation of the facility than I can. Um, as an overview, just want to, you know, mention a few things that this is an adaptive reuse of this office building uh, for an indoor climate-controlled self-storage facility. Um, you know, by my clients, uh, my clients have, have done this. Uh, they, they've put up about thirty-five facilities of this type uh, throughout the country. Many of them are redevelopment-type of facilities like this. And I believe you've seen in, in your packet of, of information, there are some before and after photos of some of the sites that they've had an opportunity to, to work on. And one thing that's, that's somewhat unique about them, uh, and we think uh, is, is beneficial to the community, is that not only do they develop these facilities, but they also manage and operate these facilities on an ongoing basis. They don't sell them. They retain these, these self-storage facilities uh, in their portfolio. So that leads them to essentially uh, you know, build a quality product or redevelop a building in a quality fashion. It's going to be operational and, and essentially exactly what, what's needed for, for their business purposes. Um, Mister Lynn Scott can go into that too. I will mention, uh, he's going to have a few comments for you in terms of the market, because it's always a question as to, you know, what does the market analysis show? And, and is there an, an unserved uh, population and a demand for these type of facilities? Mister Lynn Scott will go on into that portion of the uh, the project as well. Um, and then finally, I, I can answer any questions with respect to the waiver use criteria. Uh, because on the waiver use criteria, there are eleven specific criteria that apply to indoor climate-controlled self-storage facilities. Uh, we meet every one of these criteria. I, I don't know if you want me to go through them, but I, I can if, if, uh, if you so desire. So with that, I'd, I'd like to turn the floor over to Jason Lynn Scott. Uh, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage, because Mister Taramina was going to show you all of the uh, the plans and the drawings and such to, to give you the visual aids to, to assist with this. Um, and we don't have that opportunity right now, but, but Jason, I think you can tell them, uh, you know, in some detail about the, the project and the plans, what's intended, both from a redevelopment standpoint and an operational standpoint for this facility, if you could, please?
Will do. Uh, thank you, John. Uh, good evening, Council. This is uh, Jason Lynn Scott with Stein Investment Group. Um, address is fifty-six oh seven Glen Ridge Drive in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, it is, I guess it'll be a little bit difficult here to, to not be able to show you, show you um, the drawings um, and site plan, but um, I can, I'll definitely do my best here to describe it. And I know you each have a packet, I believe, uh, that has all the information in it. So um, um, so this is a, uh, this is a project that is uh, in the vacant former AT&T occupied office building on Plymouth Road, uh, just east of Merriman Road, uh, on the north side of Plymouth Road. Uh, the, the building's been vacant for uh, five, five or six years or so. It was once occupied by AT&T, who is the original occupant. Um, and uh, we, as um, as Mister Gaber mentioned, we are planning to repurpose the building uh, for interior climate-controlled self-storage. Um, so I'll, I'll just pause there for just a moment, and I'll do this briefly, because I know we're bringing up the end of your agenda tonight for a long night, but.
Excuse me, this, um.
Sure.
I, I just, I just want to say that um, that it's not, it, it, in no, it's, it's not through any fault of your own that you're at the end of the agenda. And we, you have our full uh, attention. And again, this isn't your, you know, this is, this is because meetings go long. So please don't feel that you have to rush through this. Um, you know, this is your time. So thank you, but you know, this is your time, and we're here to do this.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, do you want me to continue, or do you want Mark? Mark, do you want to um, maybe take over for a moment and show the screen? What's best here?
Uh, if you give me one minute, I will be able to share the screen. And I apologize for that, Council, for whatever reason. My computer crashed at the worst possible time.
Uh, no apologies necessary, Mark. You uh, we were all astounded when you weren't there immediately. I think.
Well, you know.
That there's been even like a blip that Mark Taramina hasn't been on it.
Yeah.
We figured some disaster would befalling you.
Okay, can everyone see the screen? And I don't know, was that Mister Gaber, I assume, who was just speaking with you?
Yes.
Okay, so um, and I don't know how much background was provided, uh, and you can see the sk- screen, is that correct?
Yep.
Uh, so former AT&T site on Plymouth Road just east of uh, Merriman Road. I think most everyone is familiar with this property. The, the parcel is about five acres in size and has quite a bit of frontage on Plymouth Road, roughly seven hundred and, and thirty-eight uh, feet of frontage. Uh, the building is three levels, contains a gross floor area of about a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fourteen thousand uh, square feet. Um, and as everyone I think knows as well, uh, this building uh, is vacant. It has been uh, mostly vacant for uh, several years. Uh, the redevelopment involves uh, really the, at least as part of this uh, initial phase for this project, the westerly three acres of the property, the uh, the easterly, the remaining easterly portion, uh, which is mostly parking uh, today, is not part of this project, and that would be reserved for uh, future development. Uh, the property is surrounded by commercial properties. Uh, the, another unique aspect about this building is the fact that uh, there is no level at um, at ground level. Uh, so uh, the lower level of the building is about six feet below the ground elevation. The, the middle level is about six feet above, and then you have a, a level above that. So, so each floor plate is about thirty-eight thousand square feet. All three floors would be used for um, an indoor self, self-climate, or excuse me, self-storage uh, facility. Uh, this does, this is treated as a, a waiver use. There are eleven special requirements that apply to the use. I won't go over all of them. I'll just say that the uh, a couple of the, probably the most prominent um, items would be the fact that, that it requires a minimum of three acres, which this request uh, meets. Um, there can only be one building uh, devoted uh, for the purpose of self-storage, which obviously uh, it would be the case here. No outside storage is allowed. Uh, access to all of the units must be from within the building. The hours of operation are limited uh, between seven AM and nine PM. And then the uh, exterior of the building should be uh, primarily uh, maintenance-free materials. So what's unique about this project, as I mentioned, is really dealing with the uh, the, the grades of this, uh, the, the floor elevations, uh, if, if you will. Uh, and in order to um, uh, provide access to each of the levels, there'll be an elevator tower constructed at the back of the building. So this, this portion here is actually in addition to the structure. It would increase the size not by a great deal, only about um, a thousand square feet additionally. But what it does is it provides ramps for trucks to access the building, to access elevator towers, providing uh, uh, access uh, to all three levels of the building. This ramp along the uh, the, the far north part of the site, uh, this is actually a canopy overhead. Uh, this ramp goes down and then back up again to allow vehicles to uh, come down to the lowest level of the, of the building, uh, where there would be um, a corridor accessing the elevators. Uh, for the middle level, there's a, a ramp only going up to a similar canopy overhead and access to the same uh, group of, of elevators. So uh, dealing with the, the, the building uh, was going to require quite extensive modifications, both in, inside the building, as well as you can see here, uh, the exterior uh, along the back of the, the building. Um, the building currently is set back about sixty feet from the right of way of Plymouth Road. Um, a little bit less than that. Uh, the, the ordinance does require sixty uh, feet. Um, the Planning Commission uh, spent quite a bit of time looking at uh, the, the property uh, in terms of how it would be impacted by the uh, development. Doesn't require a lot of parking, as you uh, would, could well imagine this type, this, this use. Uh, there would be some spaces provided along the east side of the uh, the building uh, for probably very limited staff, as well as uh, customers uh, to the site. The sales and leasing office would be located here in the northeast corner of the site, where there uh, would be a small addition provided to the building. And that's the one area of the building that's actually at grade level. Um, this, uh, they provided some uh, some general floor plan showing how the uh, corridors uh, would be laid out. These are basically the existing corridors, but how the uh, the, what were previously the call center and office areas would be converted to uh, the uh, the units. As far as the exterior of the building, um, the, it's, it's primarily brick um, along the facade. Uh, there is the existing entry, main entry and, and lobby area to the building. Uh, that would be modified um, as part of their brand identity here. Uh, where they would, um, they, they can explain it, but the glazing here uh, would, would be maintained. It would not serve uh, as an entrance, uh, but more as a uh, a, a feature to the building, uh, identifying it as a self-storage uh, facility. Uh, the um, the upper of the portion of the building would be renovated to include uh, new EFS. Uh, fiber cement panels would be provided along the uh, the sides uh, of the uh, building. Uh, spandrel glass or EFS would be used to cover the windows along the front. There would be some glazing, as I indicated here, where the lobby existed. Um, I'll show you one last thing, and, and I know it might be a little difficult to understand how this uh, how, how the access along the back operates. So this would, this is what it would look like from the rear of the building, where these uh, green lines would represent the canopies. Uh, but if you can see this line going down and going back up again, that's where the um, the ramps would be provided to the lower level of the building, uh, where this dash line uh, essentially represents uh, the, the finished floor elevation of the lower part of the building. Uh, and then this ramp going up, which is separate from this uh, these ramps going down and up uh, for the lower level, this ramp going up is to access the middle level of the building. And this line, this dash line represents the finished floor elevation generally of uh, of that middle level. Of course, the only way to access the upper level units would be uh, via the elevator. Um, that would be added. So with that, I'll answer any questions. I, I believe Mister Gaber and others uh, with the company would like to show you some additional slides. And I will point out uh, one last thing. The only modification to the requirements made by the Planning Commission were with respect to the hours of operation. Uh, the petitioner in this case is asking that the hours be extended uh, from nine PM to ten PM. And that recommendation was um, supported by the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Mister Lynn Scott, do you want to continue with uh, with your discussion, please?
Yes, absolutely. Great, thank you. Well, it was very timely, Mark, and uh, very, very well done. Um, thank you very much. Um, so um, I'll back up for just a moment. Um, so just to, to kind of introduce you guys to who we are. Uh, we're an Atlanta, Georgia-based uh, family real estate company. Uh, we, we develop and own real estate, um, really all over the southeast, Midwest and mid-Atlantic. Uh, and we are retail, primarily retail and self-storage are, are the two uh, commercial real estate products that we, we own and manage. Um, self-storage is, is uh, something we've been doing for, for, I don't know, twelve or thirteen years. And we've done three and a half or four million square feet of this type of product. Uh, we, our approach to self-storage has always been um, a little bit more retail-minded. Um, so we, we, we believe this product and others do as well. We're not the only ones. We're not inventing this concept, but we just see it as a retail product. This is something for um, the community, and this is a, you know, our, our customers are the consumers. Um, as, as John said, John Gaber said at the beginning, um, the space shop here is our brand. Um, so that's something that, that's our management company and our brand. So when we build these, we build them to our standards. Um, and then we manage, own and manage them ourselves with, with our uh, with our staff. Um, and this will be no different. Uh, we're, we're very proud of these facilities. We, we put a lot of effort into making them sort of best-in-class, uh, and sort of recognize that way uh, in all the places that we go and do these, do these facilities. It's also been kind of, uh, it's, it's been a pleasure to, uh, we've done a lot of ground-up facilities. Um, you know, where we build a brand-new building. Uh, we've also done a lot of building uh, re, um, sort of repurposing of exist- existing buildings, which is what we're doing here. Uh, and it's, they're a little, they're a lot of fun to do, because you, you sort of take an existing building that has some functional obsolescence to it, some issue, uh, and we fix it. And, and most of these buildings like this one have big parking fields that are also just completely unused. So the nice thing about the self-storage business is we don't need much parking. Uh, we really, we'll end up with somewhere between twelve and fourteen. Really, we'll end up with somewhere between 12 and 14 trips a day through the facility. And those customers generally will be in the rear, doing any kind of loading, at those loading areas that, that Mark was describing. So, we don't really use very much parking. So, that enables us to then use the other part of the site for some other type of development. Generally, we can activate that with some type of retail or other, other new use that wasn't previously possible because of the parking requirement of the, the building that is now functionally obsolete. So, we've done buildings like Toys R Us' and K-Marts and office buildings, bowling alleys, you name it, all types of buildings that just had great bones, just were, were sort of functionally obsolete. You know, this building is, is super unique. And, and all my years, I really haven't seen an office building of this size built like this. You know, as, as Mark described, it doesn't have a floor at grade. So, when you walk in the building, it's, it's like walking to a split-level home. You walk in and you either go downstairs or upstairs, which is pretty unique for an office building. You know, if you want to use an office building to put a bunch of people in it, it's pretty unusual to not have a floor that's at least at grade for access. So, it was a bit of a challenge to try and figure this one out. And I think we, we have a great, have a great design here, and we're, we're really happy with it. You know, primarily, and I, I do kind of want to address one quick thing that Mark said, when we talk about access in the back, 99% of our customers and our vehicle access here are, are the community members and their vehicles. It's typically their, their car, their SUV, their minivan, those types of things, maybe a small trailer. But it's, that's, that's 99% of the access here and what our customers will be doing. Every once in a while, we get a large truck, but it's, it's, it's not that, not that common, but it does happen from time to time. If you want, if you don't mind, I think, is it, Mark, are you driving the presentation? Thank you. Would you go to those before-and-after slides? So, that you were on just a moment ago. So, these are just a couple of examples I wanted to show you guys of what we do when we take an existing facility and, or existing building and improve it. So, this, this, for example, was a, was actually an old car dealership. Here, you can see this is sort of the before, the after is the next slide, which shows the resulting facility. You know, this particular community wanted this to look like a retail building on the left. And in fact, some of those are retail suites on the left. So, this is a different scenario, but you can sort of see the before and after. And I'll, I'll go through these quickly. But this was a Kmart, actually a closed Kmart on the left, which we, this is the new facade of that Kmart. This is in Charleston, near Charleston, South Carolina. Really turned out nice. This is an old bowling alley. This community wanted us to look a little bit more modern, so we did that, and then we improved it. And I think the next one is an old office building, actually. If you don't mind, let's flip into the next one. Yeah, this is an old office building, three stories, pretty similar to this situation, although this one really didn't have as good a bones, it didn't look so good. It needed a complete redo, so that building turned into, to this. And then I think there's a couple more. This was an older, sort of gymnasium-looking building that had some storage in it that we, we put a whole new facade on, new, new, new materials. So, hopefully that gives you sort of a, just a, oh, there's one more here. That was an old furniture store that we converted to a new building as well. Kind of, you can sort of see sort of the, the, the difference between the before and after. And the whole idea with these is, you know, when you, when you come in and repurpose a building, it's really important to make it look like it was purpose-built, that it was, it was built for what you're doing. So, if you can see in some of those afters, none of those buildings look like we just stuck a sign on it and said, hey, you know, come in and put your things in here. And they look purpose-built, they look like they were built for that reason. And this is, this is no different. So, on this building, the brick and the architecture of the building really has a lot of great features and characteristics to it. So, we're going to use those and just sort of continue forward. We put these big, a little bit more dramatic elements in the middle and on the ends. And what we're doing here is that the middle part that's glass is actually all completely new. So, we're going to remove the existing glass vestibule that's there today and replace it with more modern storefront and modern, modern glass. And then the gray horizontal between the doors is a Nietzsche Ha product, which is like a fiber cement, but it has a wood grain to it, so it looks like sort of gray wood. It's a really nice product. And that's what's on the ends also, the large gray vertical elements on the, on, on each bookending, the left and right sides of the, the building. And then, if you'd like, I can, I think Mark did a really nice job of describing the, the loading in the rear. I'm happy to answer questions on that, but I won't sort of repeat what he, what he said. The, and I, I'll sort of switch over real quick to why we like this site. This, you know, I, I talked to you about how, why we like the building, why we like to repurpose buildings like this and where it makes sense. However, it only makes sense to do these where we find an undersupply of the product that we provide to the community. It doesn't do any good for us to invest all this money in, in a community, and then there not, there not be demand for the product. So, we do a pretty detailed analysis, we do a very detailed analysis on supply and demand saturation, and we sort of study trade areas and figure out where there are those imbalances in, in saturation. And, and this market is one of those that has an undersupply of this type of product in it. The, the, the trade area here, and when I say trade area, what we do is we sort of know where our customers will come from, what type of radius they will come from, so to speak, and it's not necessarily a circle, right? We study traffic patterns and where the schools are and the grocery and to and from work and those sorts of things, and figure out how a community function, how the traffic flow functions. But the trade area here has about five, including our facility, because we have to include our facility in our analysis, if we're going to build it, has about five square feet per capita. So, that's total self-storage product. And a lot of those are what we would call Class C facilities, meaning outdoor, drive-up, older facilities. So, you can envision the, the older-style self-storage product with a, you know, fence around it and all outdoor, drive-up storage. The newer, you know, interior climate-controlled product with climate-protected loading, which is what this is, there's, there's about two square feet per capita in this trade area, including, including our facility, if we were to build this facility, which is really, is very low. A market like this, you'd expect to see something closer to seven square feet per capita. So, it shows that there's a, there's an undersupply of that. And when I say that demand, I, I'm happy to get into it if you guys would like. I don't want to bore you with it, but there's a lot of things that go into that demand analysis, everything from demographics to housing stock, what type of houses there are, other types of storage facilities, and so on and so forth. And of course, climate and things like that. So, there's, 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 there's a lot of analysis goes into that, and I'm happy to talk, speak to that stuff if you'd like to. That's sort of the general overview of the reason we like this market, the city, and this particular site. I think I'll stop there and just answer questions. Hopefully, I've covered the main points here. But of course, I see there's already a question and I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mark, did you want to add anything else? Or did anyone else from the petitioner's side want to add anything else before I go to counsel? All right. Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, I, I just, I guess it'd probably be through the chair to petitioner, you know, just a kind of a general statement. I, I think, you know, anytime you have a building, I'm, I've, I've seen this building sit there, you know, over the course of five years. So, having a development come in there and repurpose a building has the ability to spark more development that goes, you know, both east, west, north, south. I even think there's a couple of commercial buildings to the east that, that are vacant. So, I love to see this kind of development. My question to the petitioner, I know you guys do a lot of market analysis, but you know, a lot of things that, at least my short time on council, I think we've approved two other storage facilities. Is the market that great for this type of business? Obviously, it is if you guys are coming in there. But again, you know, I, I don't see any other reason to not support this. It's something that's going to revitalize the existing area. But that was just kind of my general question.
Sure. Thank you for that. Thank you very much. The answer to your question is yes. I, I know it seems like, it, it's been an interesting, I would say, 10 years for the self-storage industry. There's been a number of, you know, a lot of facilities built over the years. And a lot of that has been, there's a couple, you know, there's a lot of discussion on why and why there's so much demand for the product. But, you know, this is, it really is sort of a new product. When you walk in the office here and you walk in the facility, it feels really good. Our offices are, they feel sort of more like hotel lobbies. I mean, there's a coffee bar with free coffee, or Keurig, if you want to make a coffee. You know, there's free water for customers. The, the office just feels really nice. And the facility feels really nice. There's music playing and, you know, it's well-lit, it's, the climate control feels really good. And I think people feel comfortable. You know, that, that sort of seven square feet per capita over that sort of the demand profile is historically been what it is. There's a, there's a lot of studies going on now. And actually, what's happening is that, that number's actually going up. People are using these products more.
Did I answer your question? Councilmember McCullough?
I did. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. I too am really excited for this project. I've been driving by this building for as long as I can remember, since I was just a little kid. And it's, it's always been this big building, and I knew AT&amp;T was there, and then it wasn't there, and it's had a tent since, and then it's really just sat vacant for such a long time. What really excites me is the fact that potentially in the future, that the lot can be split and the large parking lot to the east could also see something done to it. Kind of like Councilman McCullough had mentioned earlier about the buildings to the east that are vacant right now and have been for some time, or have kind of been struggling to keep tenants there. So, hopefully, this can revitalize this mile area right there. I did have a question. Looking at the packet, there was a 9:00 PM and a 10:00 PM, and then Mr. Torreina had mentioned that the petitioner is asking for 10:00 PM. Is that a big issue you see, Mr. Torreina, extending to 10:00 PM? Is that something you're worried about, or what do you foresee being an issue there?
I do not. Planning commission really did not have issue with extending the hours. Really, there's no impact to any residential area or sensitive land uses in the immediate area. So, I think it was felt that, that, that ask was, was pretty innocuous, non-inocent.
And just for clarification, the 10:00 PM or 9:00 PM, whatever it happens to be, does that mean that nobody can enter the building, like customer-wise? Or is this just like for office staff, the office has to be shut down, everybody has to leave, sort of thing?
It would apply to customers as well.
Awesome. Well, I'm definitely in support of this. I'm really excited for, for this potential project. It was awesome to see some of the past projects the petitioner has worked on and the quality of workmanship they, they bring to the table. Earlier, there was the comment about the, the family runs this business, and you can really tell that they look over all the little details to make, to make it the successful brand that it is. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? I can't, I can't see fully if there's anybody else with their hand up, because we're still sharing. Okay, there we go. All right. If, if no one else has any comments, I, did, did we have anything? Did we have something offered? Did we have resolution offered?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to offer an approving on consent if there is no objection.
All right. Well, I, I do not want it to go on, I, I would, I do not want it to ban consent. And I haven't done this in a long time. I think I can do it. I'd like to offer, and, and I'd like to say that I think this is a really exciting project. I love reuses of buildings. I get, I love it when people come to our community and they love our community, and they use words like "good bones" about our buildings. The AT&amp;T building isn't iconic, you know, if you're not from Livonia, but if you grew up here, it, it is kind of iconic. Though, the one concern that I have is all the work that we're putting into Plymouth Road and what we're trying to do with Plymouth Road. And, and I think this is a tremendous brand. I have to tell you, I was looking at the branding and thinking this is really fantastic branding for self-storage, you know, giving it kind of that retail feel. I mean, this looks like a, this looks like a internet retail site, right? Where you go to buy cool things. I am concerned about if this is the highest and best use of a facility on Plymouth Road. And, and I, I, I really, really like this product. I like the nature, I like the, you know, the upscale nature, if you will, the ambiance, the restricted hours, everything about it. But I, I, I guess I'd like the ability to dive a little bit deeper into if this fits with the vision for Plymouth Road. And, and I don't, I don't have a foregone conclusion on that. I mean, we've allowed a lot of things on Plymouth Road. And I, I hope the petitioner understands that this in no way is lack of enthusiasm for your project, your appreciation for the investment you're willing to make here and the thought-out way you've approached this. But this is a, you know, to me, this is a big decision for a big building on Plymouth Road at a time that we're really giving a lot of attention to where we're putting things in our city. So, I'd like to offer that unless one of our attorneys tells me that, does the president be able to? I haven't done this in a long time, but I think, I think I can. Yes?
So, just a question, are you looking for a resolution to put in the committee of the hall?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I should have made that clear. I haven't done this, right? I, you know, I haven't done this in a long time, if ever, in the last year and a half. So, anyway.
Madam, Madam President? If it makes it easier, thanks, Madam President. If it makes it easier, I don't mind offering my resolution for the committee of the hall if it just makes things cleaner for the president.
No, it doesn't. We, we can have multiple, well, often we have multiple resolutions. And the city attorney did not tell me that I couldn't, and our former, our, let me say, our, our very capable city attorney and our very capable former assistant city attorney did not tell me that I couldn't do it, and I think parliamentary rules allow me to do it. So, I'm going to do that. But I, I really, and, and I know it seems counterintuitive to the, to the petitioners and maybe to Mark to hear me say that I love this, but I want to take a deeper look at it. And it, it's only because this is a, you know, that this is a time when I think we're really looking at what we're putting in to our major, especially where we're trying to develop retail and, and, you know, dining and walkability and everything else. So, thank you. But, yes?
Again, I, there, there's no objection. You certainly have the authority to make a resolution for the committee of the hall. I just want to make sure that I have it clear, there are two resolutions on the table then, an approving by Mr. Donovan on the regular and a resolution for committee of the hall by President McIntyre.
Yes. Yes. All right. And, and again, I think the planning commission did a, you know, did an excellent job vetting this, and all the conditions are met. So, I, I, again, I know it seems counterintuitive, but that's why I'm asking for it. So, the, the, I'm sure you guys are very experienced in development and everything else. So, what will happen at the regular meeting of May, is it May 6th? I think it's May 10th, I'm sorry. We, we, we will vote, there are two resolutions, and they'll, they'll both, they'll both be offered. And if the first one that's offered is approved, then we don't go to the second one. Correct? Did I say that correctly, Mr. Bernier?
That's correct.
Okay. And if the first one fails, then we do go to the second one for a vote. But I, I think this is exciting, and I, I mean, again, it just, it's really exciting to see a building like that with good bones at a time when all modern buildings are not built with good bones, right? They're big boxes. To see somebody excited about reusing it. So, thank you. And Mark, thank you for the efforts to get back with us and, and present. We needed to see that.
So, Madam President, if I can ask a question. So, do you, are you asking us to, to present more information?
No.
Or?
No.
Okay.
No. Not, not at all. What, what, what I'm, what I'm asking for is, so, next week, what will happen is there'll be a, a resolution for approval presented at the, at the, at the meeting. And no, you don't have to prepare any additional presentation. We do ask that you rejoin us via Zoom.
Yes.
And if that resolution is approved, meaning assuming that we have all four members of council with us, that we have four votes for it, then, then the, then your, your waiver petition is approved. If we don't have four votes, then we would go to the resolution I offered, which is to put it into committee. And presumably, we would have four votes on that one. And then we would And then we would schedule a committee of the whole, when, when then we would, we would ask you to participate, and again, via Zoom, and have a deeper discussion on, on this. And we'd probably consult with some other folks like the Plymouth Road Development Authority and any other people that we thought were significant stakeholders and whether it's a good idea for this facility to go on Plymouth Road.
Yeah. Well, that, thank you. I appreciate the explanation. I mean, the only thing we can emphasize in that regard is, is that this, this is a rather unique office building with a gray differential. It's been vacant for a number of years, and in order to adaptively reuse that, reuse that building, you'd need some type of a use such as this to be able to do so. Because it's going to be virtually impossible in this day and age to find some other type of office user to come into this type of facility that, that's built that way to utilize it, because there are other opportunities, you know, available in this area and elsewhere. So that, that's why we believe that we've, we've got a viable use for this building to be able to maintain this, as you mentioned, iconic building and, and to reuse it for productive use that's aesthetically attractive. And, and we believe that this, along with the opportunity to redevelop the out parcel next door for future retail use, will, will be a draw for the Plymouth Road corridor. So we appreciate your consideration for this project.
Understood. And, and I just, I, I know it seems counterintuitive, what I've proposed, and, and, you know, it's exactly what I said. I really do think that your proposal for this, for the reuse of this building is fantastic. And it, it, it's everything we like to see, right? It's, again, enthusiastic about our community, finding a reuse for a, for a really great building, and really being willing to, to work to make this an outstanding facility.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Coy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can appreciate the fact that we might want to go to committee of the whole. I've owned a business on Plymouth Road for the past forty-three years. I want to make sure that, gives us a little bit of time to digest this a bit. There was a church in there at one point, kind of a big building for a church, but who am I to say it wouldn't be an appropriate place for a church? Not that they're there now or coming back perhaps, I don't know. But all I'm saying is this gives us some time to digest this a bit. What you've presented, it looks like is, is very well thought-through, et cetera. But, you know, we, we, the mix on Plymouth Road is what we, you know, want to look at and, and the different businesses and such that, you know, we have. So thank you for coming to Livonia, and thank you for presenting. Really appreciate it.
All right. So, so we'll just ask you to, to join, and the good news is it's a regular. We don't have a lot of things on the agenda as of now, so it should be early in the evening, and we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And also just excellent presentation all the way around.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we go back to, was that really our last agenda item? We go back to audience communication. If anyone in the audience would like to communicate with the council on any item that was not in the season's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. Calling once, calling twice, final call for audience communication. Seeing none, we are adjourned at eight nineteen. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, council. Thank you, Casey. Thank you, Livonia TV, and everyone who takes the time to join us. All right. Good night, everyone.